Mr. President, as I spoke to you about this, I received an email from the administrator. He said it was posted for three days and not four days. So there's two, there's several things the council can do. The council can discuss the matter, but can't consider that as a first reading. You can discuss it, but you can't consider this the first reading because it's only been posted for three days.
However, the first one, this was continued previously. So therefore, basically, we could basically amend it to include this.
You could do that. You could do that, but I mean, if you, you could do that.
Right.
But I just think that you...
It's no different than a general assembly. You have a bill, you've got it, and you put what you need to do.
You still only can amend it if you want to amend it and substitute it. I just think for a complete, it is a complete substitute. Right? It is a complete substitute.
Yeah, this is, this is a complete substitute.
I would just, I would recommend it. Discuss it if you want to discuss it until there's no other change. But don't consider it a first reading. Let the next meeting be the first reading. That's what I'm asking. Recommend it.
This is the second, this is the second time we had this. The only change was, as you can see, was a red. I said personally, like I said, it just soon, I just soon amended, included this. And then we'll have the first reading.
Mr. President, Mr. Pirelli, I have a copy with blue, and then I have a red line copy. Which copy am I looking at?
What's going to happen is because of the posting, because of the failure of posting for, I guess, lack of 24 hours.
Four days.
Four days. This was continued. However, however, whatever, however, this can be, basically amend this with this. And so therefore...
Mr. President, yeah?
Yes.
After the last name, I put the, the whiteness with the blue writing, I put it in to prompt the form and posted that on February 18th.
On February 18th, okay.
This was received on Thursday, March 18th, the red, the red line.
March 18th. So, so therefore, my correct, Mr. Solicitor, this, this can be the amendment to this.
It can be, it can read. If that's what you want to do, you can do that. But I, I still would rather have you go the extra meeting. I would ask for it to, I would ask you to do that. If you don't want to do that, I would just ask you to, you know, indicate that you're substituting it, but don't consider tonight the first reading of this. Go the extra meeting. Just, just for, it is a controversial matter. I would ask you to do that. Consider it.
All right then.
But you certainly can discuss it. It's on the agenda, it's properly posted.
All right, we'll discuss it. Motion to discuss the add receipt 3316. Sorry. Motion by the chair, secondly, Councilman Soli. Is there any further, hearing that? Mr. Solly?
Ms. Alves? Yes. Mr. Solly?
Yes.
Just relax.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. This is the legislation dealing with town vehicles. It's broken down into various segments, from A to G. It defines different items on it. As you can see, it was a business use. And this, this is, this is what's in the current, current aspect of the U.S. Town vehicles shall be used for town business and travel only. Occasionally used for professional associations, activity, courses, or seminars permit, is permissible with the approval of the town administrator. Now, the amended part of this is, notwithstanding the foregoing, town vehicles shall not be used to travel to the Rise Medical Academy or any other charter school. That's the amendment. What's in the original, again, this is the original aspect, transportation of personal property or passengers not associated with departmental, department members of business is prohibited. That's currently in the ordinance. The amendment will be as follows. Town vehicles may be driven by a town official or employee with a valid driver's license. Strictly will be, town vehicles are to be driven only by a licensed town employee. It picks up in the original, it says, and shall be driven in a safe, courteous, and legal manner. The amendment aspect of it is, at the end of each workday, the vehicle shall be parked at a town facility unless commuter use is authorized. It's part of the amendment. In the current form, is, form of the ordinance says, during a vacation or extended absence, where amending in excess of three days, the vehicle shall be parked at a town facility for use by other than, by other town amending officials or employees. Any employee shall use a town-owned vehicle must have approval of the department, of the department director. That's the first paragraph of this.
B.
Then?
Yeah, go ahead. Just, now, B.
Yeah, okay, B. All right. B is commuter use. The only amendment of this is, in this aspect of this phrase is that it reads as, will read as follows. Vehicles may be used for commuting purposes by, when amending parts, town officials or, then it goes, employees who are regularly on emergency call for the purpose of traveling to and from the employee's residence and returning to the work site to perform emergency repair supervisory services. Town vehicles used for commuting purposes are not personal, are not personal vehicles and are not for personal use. Vehicles belong to the town and should be used in a manner consistent with town purposes. Any use of other, other than professional work-related business is strictly prohibited. Then we move to C. Commuting approval, which just stays, stays in its original format, is as follows. Commuting approval. Use of town vehicles for commuting purposes must be authorized by the town administrator and can be approved for only reasons stated in subsection B of the section. Commuting is taking employee-provided vehicles to and from a work site and the employee's residence. Commuting is considered a de minimis fringe benefit, which is part of, de minimis fringe benefit is part of your IRS code. And that is, and this is staying entirely intact. Then we go marking of vehicles. The only amendment is, it's going to be registered with, and I'll read it in its entirety. This is D. Marking of vehicles. Town vehicles other than police vehicles shall generally be marked in a uniform manner with the town sealed and registered with governmental plates. Now, E is vehicle travel logs. This is a new section, so, and it reads, it will read as follows. Vehicles travel and fuel logs. Any town official or employee, except a sworn police officer, authorized to use a town vehicle, shall maintain a written travel and fuel log providing the date, destination, business purpose, starting odometer reading, ending odometer reading, miles traveled, and date, and the amount of refueling. The vehicle shall, the vehicle travel and fuel log shall be submitted each week for the approval by the town administrator and retained by the town finance director, subject to the review by the town council. To facilitate accurate record-keeping and refueling of town vehicles must be completed at the town highway departments. And the purpose of this is that, as town vehicles, it's important that there shall be no abuse. And when you want to cross-reference things, in the private sector, they do have few, uh, logs. And so, because it is a town vehicle, we want to see that, we want to make sure that proper, proper items will be addressed as far as to not abuse the privilege of which a vehicle is utilized. Item F will read as follows. Any town official or, that's the amended part, employee who fails to perform his duty under the force-aid provision may be subject to disciplinary action. Now, this is the amended, the amendment, including suspension, termination of town vehicle privileges, indoor suspension of termination of employment. The town administrator and public safety director, when this is office is held by the town administrator, who fails to comply with the force-aid provision, may be subject to suspension or termination of town vehicle privileges by the town council. And finally, the last part, which is also an amendment, G. The ordinance shall not apply when the use of town vehicle is granted pursuant to a contract approval by the town council. The purpose of this is to provide accountability to the taxpayers of the community, that a vehicle shall no longer be used for personal use or abuse. And the fact is that, again, use of a town vehicle is a privilege, not a right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
My, under E, the last sentence, just for clarification, town administrator, director of public safety, when this office is held by the town administrator, who fails to comply with the, afford said provisions, may be subject to suspension or termination of town vehicle privileges by, says the town council. But I would say, just to clarify, by majority votes, and I won't say it has to be a supermajority, but you could just insert majority vote of town. We know it's town council, but just to make it easy, three out of five, as opposed to four out of five. Just to clarify, that's something I would like to interject there. Does that make sense, Solicitor?
If you want to clarify this one.
Right. Thanks.
Jason?
My question on this was, um, you see that the police are resented, but it kind of reads to me that that means anytime DPW has to fix a light bulb, they have to track a mileage log. Is that, is that how I read this? For every town vehicle other than police, a mileage log is going to need to be kept?
Mileage log will be kept for, for example, the Sessas automobile?
So department heads.
Well, the vehicles that are used, like, I mean, not necessarily the department who's utilizing the vehicle at that particular...
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, so would every DPW truck need to have a mileage log now?
No, because they're on a verbal...
That's exactly why I'm asking that question.
Then if that working out in office, they're working on roads. So that, it's crazy.
I just think that that would be overly cumbersome for him to track.
Yeah, for them it would be, so they're exempt from that. My feeling.
That's not how I think it is though.
I was going to give you that, it's the same question. I can be quite honest with you. I think we're going way overboard on this one. To do a log, for me to ask my people to do a log in the middle of a snowstorm, I think is a little ridiculous. Now, if I've got people who are going to Newport to a seminar, I don't have, I don't have a problem at all documenting that. However, we want to put that in there. But to do the day-to-day operations, the street sweeper's going to have to keep pulling over on the side of the street to document what street he's now going to sweep. Believe me, my personnel have been in my office the last two weeks about this. And the union is, is all over here in this. I understand where we're going.
The cab is their office, right? That is their office. I mean, I, I agree with you 100 percent.
I, I just, you know, I, I certainly, I mean, if you want to have me do a log if I'm going to go to Providence, personally, I don't even take a town vehicle. It's more a pain in the neck than anything. I'll take my personal, and I, and I don't even put in the reimbursement for fuel. Because I'm not really sure if that cost me to make it to Providence. So I'm just going to aggregate from my department that we only moved out in a daily log. I don't love this.
Yeah, that makes sense. Next, school public, thank you, excuse, public courts.
I think that's the point I was going to, exactly.
Town highway vehicles?
I think you could add, you could add, um, public courts. Yeah. Public courts to your...
Under the normal course of use.
Well, with the finance director's suggestion, maybe department head vehicles, that's, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. Myself, building inspector, zoning inspector, people who have a town vehicles vehicle, I don't see that being a problem at all. Animal control, I'm just looking at my, my personnel. Animal control, everybody.
Well, it's, yeah. Animal control takes his vehicle home, doesn't it?
No, he does not.
Oh, he doesn't?
No, because people stop in his house and they expect him to take care of it like 24 hours.
Oh, okay.
So, no, he doesn't, actually, nobody takes vehicles home anymore.
Okay.
No, we just, it's, it's, it's not, it's...
Okay.
Anytime I take, take a vehicle home is if we have a squad.
So we changed, you know, suggested the change to include public courts, right?
To exclude.
Yeah, exclude. Include them and exclude.
Okay.
I think, I think it needs to exclude day-to-day operation, business operations, you know, as far as the public works, the, uh, public works employees.
Public works and rec there, well?
Listen, if, the work needs to get done, no matter what. It's, it's the after-hour stuff, it's the personal stuff that the issue is. It's not the day-to-day getting the roads done stuff that the issue is, you know? I mean, we can come up with this for every department, you know? I think what Ray said makes some sense to it, you know, department heads.
If, if you're behind your wheel, that's your office. It's, it's almost impossible to, to log those destinations hours.
So until, Mr. President, until Kendall Dean becomes the House of Town Administration and School Administration, every time someone has to go from Town Hall A to Town Hall B, they have to log it? I think this entire ordinance is far too restrictive. I'm not against having assured of ordinance for the use of town vehicles and our protection of those town vehicles, but I think this is far more left than what we have right now, which is far too right. I think we could probably come somewhere in the middle. The last discussions we had, I thought, Mr. Soli had brought up some very good points about how his private use of his work vehicle has some restrictions on it, but it's not so restrictive where someone can't stop and get a loaf of bread on the way that they're commuting home. I, I don't think that that would be a right if we're allowing someone to commute home and they have to stop off to get a loaf of bread or grab a piece of pizza on their way home because they've worked however many hours. And I'm not just saying, you know, anything for the town measure, I'm talking about all town officials. If, for some reason, Mr. Pendergast's car breaks down and needs to take the, the town car home, even though it'll probably be the other way around.
No way. No way. Let me just say this, it's not worth it. I'll walk to work before I take a town vehicle back and forth. The only time I take it is in the way of anticipating a snowstorm or any type of disaster. That's the only time I take a truck home.
Mr. Pendergast?
Never.
The statement, it's not worth it, can you elaborate on that?
Not worth it. You got, if you're going to stop, if you want me to stop at Bridgetos and get some chicken and some bread on the way home, I've got 14 people taking my picture in Bridgetos and in the parking lot.
You're kidding. Don't you think that that's a problem within the town that that happens?
It's a problem, it's a problem in general in the world, I think, but the problem is this, I, I live in town. I don't need to take a vehicle home. And unless I have to get out in the middle of the night to get into work for a snowstorm or another disaster, it really doesn't matter to me. I think this is more geared towards the administrator who is taking the vehicle home all the time. No one takes the vehicles home anymore. That policy came out a long time ago.
Right, and you just actually brought up a very good point. It does seem geared towards the administrator because she does have the commuter use of the vehicle. In the current ordinance, she is allowed to give herself permission to take the car home for commuter use. And there is no, in the current ordinance, there's nothing that says really outlining what is approved and what isn't approved. And that's what I'll agree, where we shored that up a bit, but I think this is far too restrictive, it's far too inclusive, because right now, as it stands even as amended, it's, it's far too restrictive for the employees that, that drive around during the day and have to, like, Council Zelinski had said, that, you know, that is your office. You know, your, your guys are in your, the trucks all day, that's where they have to be.
Then you're going to get into record-keeping. Who's going to look at all these records at the end of the week?
Exactly. Exactly. Who's going to keep them, maintain them, look at them, sign off on them?
I go with what the finance director said. I, I'm all in favor of department heads logging their time in and out. I have not a problem with that at all.
Bob Erickson, town planner.
How did you get up there? I asked him to speak before him.
He's a public official.
He's not a town resident.
I would gladly defer to anybody else who wants to speak before me. Mr. Pallado, you want to speak?
Yeah, do it.
Mr. President, Mr. Zelinski, Mr. Soli, and Ms. Alves.
That's extremely rude.
What is?
What you just did, you know what you just did.
What did I just do?
Skipped over me.
Did you turn around and send me a reply to the email about the belt? You skipped over me, dear.
Okay, that's, uh...
How did you tell this worldwide?
Come on, please. Sessom proper decor.
Tell him to be respectful.
I would highly recommend, if you're going to rewrite this, this ordinance, put the language in like Mr. Pendergast said. He was correct, because town drivers who are driving these trucks during the snowstorm, they don't really have the time to do it. Now, you say that nobody else is taking these vehicles home. You've got probably, and not that I'm signaling out the police department, you've got three or four cops who take these cars, these cars home. You've got the lieutenants, you've got captains, you've got the dog, uh, the, the canine officer. What needs to be done is, you need, you, my suggestion is, if you're going to rewrite this ordinance, you need to rewrite it to include or exclude these powerful people in these two departments, of those employees who take home the town vehicles so that no future problems will arise. You know, you've got the canine officer, nobody ever talked about, all right? I know he's not abusing it, but how about all these other police officers? Do they use the vehicle on town time or not? I don't know. I really don't care. I don't think they're going to be taking it down to Maryland for a vacation by any means. The other thing that I would suggest is this, I didn't hear this discussion tonight regarding license plates all that much. Well, the town ordinance under section 222, after making my presence known at the governor's office, and after working with town solicitor Igliozzi's father, Department of Administration, and let me just tell you right now, these plates came to the town through the Honorable J. Joseph Garrett as a courtesy. And Mr. Igliozzi can attest to this, guy worked with his dad, all right? And they are not the property of the town. They do not comply with the ordinance. So if you're going to change this ordinance, change it once and for all, get rid of the plates. Nobody in this town has jurisdiction to these 400,000 plates. They're gone. They're registered to the town, so when they hand it in for the $3, I've already called, go down to the registry in Cranston, you pay the $3, you pay the plate transfer, and you turn around and end up getting a town plate for the vehicle. A town plate is more noticeable than that 400,000 plate by people who are going to turn around and be looking for this Ford Focus. And that's all it's going to be. Once the emblems are on this vehicle, once the plates are on this vehicle, this car's going to be noticed, and we're going to see if, if somebody's going to take this vehicle out of the town. The other thing that I've got, I've got a lot more above, because of other circumstances, someone's not here, I'm not going to say anything. As far as, again, if you're going to change the ordinance, do it right. And currently, the diameter of these town seals on these vehicles is 12 inches. I would suggest, from this point forward, after the town administrator, public safety director, is, whatever her title is, I don't know, and I really don't care, you make it from this point forward, 16 inches, all vehicles, no ands, no ifs, no buts. You don't turn around and go and spend the extra money now. If Mr. Pendergast gets a new, um, suck, suck truck to suck up the, the sawholes or whatever, it's a Vapal truck. I know what it is, all right? And it's like, the new vehicles get the 16-inch emblem, because I'm going to tell you why. You've got some very deceitful people in this town, very deceitful. People who lie through their teeth. And you can travel, I think it's two-tenths of a mile down Providence Street, and for $3.50, currently, you got, you got 12-inch stickers. You can turn around and get a 13-inch circle cut out of magnetic sign material, same color as the silver on this 19, I mean, on a 2014 Ford Focus. You can turn around and put this on the side of the car, and you can drive to Maryland, to California, to the Jersey Shore, and no one would ever know the difference. My advice is, make the change, if you're going to do the change, do it correctly. From this point forward, do it 16 inches on, on, for the entire fleet, from this point forward, all right? I'm not saying that Mr. Pendergast has to go out and have all his, all his, all his trucks redone. Town doesn't have the money, all right? But I'm just saying, anything new, if any new vehicles or any vehicles that need a new sticker from now on, Mr. Pendergast, you, I don't know where you had these, the ones made, you can go right on Providence Street, American Sign, I already went there, if you've got, already got the graphic print on it, they'll turn around and gladly do it, because I spoke to Charlie over there the other day, all right? And for a lot less than probably what you're paying, all right? That's all I've got to say. I've got a lot more to say, but under the circumstances, a few of you know why I'm not going to say it just now. Other than that, I would say, Mr. Igliozzi, say hi to your father for me, and if you got to do this, please do it right, and thank you for your hard work. Thank you very much for your hard work, because I'm going to tell you something, all right? Mr., I mean, President Boucher himself, we've worked on this for many hours, and I will say this much, you know, his ideas and my ideas, along with Mr., with Mr. Zelinski and Mr. Soli and Ms. Alves, I will tell you right now, it's like, it needs to be done, and if it's not done, I will tell you right now, as far as, if you're going to set precedence, you got to start it now. Because it was asked to me, what's going to happen, say, if the next town administrator, next November, December comes in, granted, he or she's going to clean house, so everybody's going, the entire administration's going, bye-bye, all right? And let's just say that, in all honesty, even if they're a good person or bad person, I'm going to tell you something. If you put, I've got a company vehicle outside right now, it's a 2016 vehicle, all right? I've got permissions to use it 24/7, but I also end up paying my own gas, all right? So, I will say this much, if you put a vehicle in somebody's yard, it's very tempting, because if you think about it, you've got a carrot, I mean, a rabbit over here, and you put a carrot over here, don't you think this rabbit's going to go for his carrot? It's going to be very tempting. So if this vehicle, a town vehicle is going to be left in somebody's driveway, parked in back of a 2010, 2011 Honda Civic, all right, on Black Plain Road, I'm going to tell you something right now, and if she has to run out to the store or go down to the nursing home on Johnston to visit her mother, I don't think she's going to bother to move the vehicle to get to her own personal vehicle. She's going to take whatever's available. Is she right? No. All right? But the bottom line of it is, let's face it, right now, I swear to God, no matter where you go, you go to the beef barn, you go to Eddie's Market, you go to the stocking shop, everybody is looking at cars, all right? And you know what the laws are, I do. Anybody up there, if you see a vehicle parked in a parking lot at a beach or something, you guys like, town car? Oh, I'm going to take a picture of this, I'm going to call Channel 12, or I'm going to call Channel 10, you know, abusing taxpayers' dollars. That's exactly, exactly what it boiled down to do. And, you know, she's not here tonight, but I will say this much, I hope that I can say what I have to say one of these days, and I'm going to tell you something, all right? I'm not going to be offensive to her, I'm going to tell her. She made her bed, now let her lie in it, because she got caught. And I'm the first one that brought this out, not Steven Vowles. Steven Vowles, excuse my expression, didn't have the balls to fight like I did.
Okay.
Please.
Come on, Dennis, please.
All right, and I'm going to tell you something, I fought it right from August of 2012, all right, and I brought it, I brought it to the, to the attention of this town council. And I'm not going to give any names, Mr. Igliozzi, but I'm going to tell you something right now, all right? When you have a town president, town council president, that literally said, I don't agree to what's been going on, but there's nothing that I can do, the town administrator, and I've got the email right inside of here.
Could you clarify that it was a previous council president, not Mr. Boucher?
Yeah, I did say it was a previous...
Let me make sure.
It was a previous town council president...
I know, let me make sure.
...not Mr. Boucher, that, an email, trail of an email that Mr. That, an email, trail of an email that Mr. Zelinski was copied on and Mr. McGee was copying on stating that, "Mrs. Hamilton says that she will not use the vehicle for vacations." So, we've got that in writing. There's a lot more that will come of it when my chance, when my time is here. But at this point, I'm gonna say, if you're gonna rewrite it, please include the circles to be 16 inches. You gotta exclude or include the police department, the public works. I know Ray, I spoke to Ray tonight about that. All right? He brought it up before I did. All right? I'm just simply saying, and the license plates, once that license plate goes, that license plate is gone. It'll never come back in this town. And someday, she cannot turn around and try to grab this and put it on her Honda, because it's not registered to any of the cars. It's registered to the town. All right? And, you know, the person I spoke to who attested this is Lisa Antonucci from the registry department. So, that's all I have to say for this evening. Thank you.
First, Mr. President, I would agree on Bob Erickson's town plan. I would agree that this should not be the first reading because it is a very different, um, structure than the original. The original split it into two sections. This combines it back into one. Um, there are some issues that are surprising and should therefore be noticed properly. Um, I will say, like Ray did, that I wouldn't touch a town car. I have turned them down. Uh, first of all, and I used a police vehicle. I'm not gonna go anywhere in a car that gets 16 to 18 miles per gallon. I drive a Honda Insight, 54 miles per gallon when I go to Providence. And when I go to a meeting in Providence, people know what kind of car I drive. And that's how we get energy money for the town. Um, you have to have credibility. And the point I wanna make tonight is that this was originally an energy project, an energy planning issue, a strategy whereby we would look at what other towns had. In one case, Cadillac Escalade. In Lincoln, we have a Ford Taurus, 30,000-plus car for the town administrator. It's considered his principal vehicle. There are no restrictions, no ordinances. It's just the way it is. And that's true in a lot of towns that have principal vehicles. Um, they don't have any ordinance for this. In fact, about half the towns I looked at didn't even have town ordinance. You can do it as a matter of policy of the administration. Everything Jason does as a, um, policy for finance doesn't get encoded as an ordinance. Uh, it's not really necessary. But the point is that we brought the value of this car down from 30,000 plus to 16, under 16,000. Gets better gas mileage, lower emissions. And the police chief agreed to take two for detectives. So, not only did they greatly lower the cost, but they lowered it in three car positions. Saved more than $10,000 in the first year. Nobody says, "Thank you for that kind of leadership." Um, it becomes an issue of trivia, petty kind of bickering. And even your own Valley Reeves, the editor, who's a fiscal conservative, said, "Why don't you just treat it like you would a lease agreement? Give it to her for 12,000 a year, 12,000 miles, 15,000, um, and charge 20 cents a mile for everything over that." That would be the simplest way to do it. And that would be consistent with the compensation package that's been done for past town administrators. So, uh, I'm gonna raise one specific issue here. To facilitate accurate record-keeping, refueling of town vehicles must be completed at the town highway department. Um, what happens if the system doesn't work? The system was partially failed in the sense that you had to go in and put in, they put in the number of actual miles, it wouldn't give you any gasoline. You put in a number higher, it wouldn't give you gasoline. Um, every school driver, school bus driver, every DPW guy, everybody who had access to that tag lied during that period of time. And what are we gonna do? We gonna take a day off from school because they'd rather not lie to get gas? You can't do it. You gotta think in the big picture. Where are you really saving money? Do you really wanna dump a new burden on Jason, who is spending most of his time figuring out how to save the town more money and make the town more money?
Mr. Erickson, this whole thing deals with abuse of a vehicle. The ordinance says it can't be used for personal use. You're trying to correct a deficiency that's there once and for all. And the fact is, I believe that maybe Mr. Pendigas can assist us on the efficiencies of your fuel system. Is there any problems with that?
There haven't.
No, there is not. There is not a problem with the fuel system. The system works perfect. It's the operator who punches in the wrong odometer reading. That is called human error. I have pointed this out to the finance director. I have pointed it out to the administrator. I will now point it out to the planner. So whoever gave him that information doesn't understand the system. I've explained this too many times. And I'm not gonna sit there and have someone say that my operators, my personnel are liars. They're not liars. If somebody puts in an incorrect number, it's human error, whether it's intentional or not intentional. That is the bottom line. And the system has built into it a 350-mile range. So if you don't know your mileage and you enter the wrong mileage the first time and you can't remember what you did the first time, and it's over the 350 mark, it's going to ask you to input the information a second time. That's not a flaw in the system. That's making the system honest.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Pendigas.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Unfortunately, I was with someone who had to fill up and they couldn't get it to work. But now I understand what was the intent there. Um, but there was a misunderstanding around town that you had to somehow fool the, and that's why I don't get involved with the.
But you just got involved, Mr. Erickson. You just got involved.
No, I don't drive the town vehicle or any other vehicle that's offered to me.
Mr. Erickson, please.
Please what?
You just said you don't get involved. You getting involved in this situation?
No, I said I do not drive the vehicle.
I'm sorry, I heard, I thought I heard you said I don't get involved.
No, I don't drive the vehicles because I don't wanna get involved with the process of putting stuff down, turning in records, being questioned about the records. It isn't worth it to me. And the town saves about $80 a year because I don't put anything in.
I am very appreciative. I'm sure that the council members, I can't speak for them, of the Green Initiative where we went with Ford's cars to get better gas mileage. Kudos. Wonderful. Thank you.
So the point I'm making is that, in this town, we have no ordinance. Elected official is not an employee, not in a classified system. So what we're doing is making up a new ordinance based on the fact that there was a presumption of misuse.
The ordinance says, "No personal use." So how can you justify?
For an employee. You are elected officials. The town administrator is elected official.
Well, we'll make sure the elected officials be accountable to the tax business, Mr. Erickson. And that's why the purpose of the ordinance.
You're welcome to do that.
And we will.
But here's, here's what you're doing. You're creating something that's so minute that it defeats the purpose that you're doing. If I were in your situation, I would send this to the ordinance review committee.
She brought it on herself.
Send it to the ordinance review committee. Get a second set of eyes on it. That's what we do with other things. We'll send it to the ordinance review committee. That's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Alves.
Mr. President. Just a couple of things I noticed in the ordinance that I just wanted to get some clarification. The first one that kinda popped out at me was the de minimis fringe benefit. Are we reporting currently to the IRS?
You're gonna have to ask the finance director.
There's no record to prove that personal use was documented. So no, there's no reporting of anything above the de minimis. If a document shows itself for us to report this, then we'll do it.
What kind of document would you require?
Um, anything substantiating the personal use.
So a lot?
Anything.
Along with supplies?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because, um, the way I read it, I'm obviously not an IRS expert or anything like that, but the way I read it was, um, that's taxable income.
That's great.
The federal war is a dollar fifty.
Hey, you had your chance.
I'm trying to help you, Mr. Vowles.
I don't need your help.
Dennis, please. Let Mr. Vowles speak, please.
So, um, my concern, it is twofold. Number one, the town is at risk right now. The IRS can go back three years and look at this. I think there's a three-year statute of limitations on this. So we've got some exposure on the town side. But also, she has to report, or anybody has to report, their usage to the IRS because it's taxable income. It should be showing on a W-2. So the fact that apparently this hasn't been done kinda opens up a whole can of worms on the IRS side. And I, again, I don't know if she's more or any employee that uses it for personal use is more at risk than the town is. But I think it's something that we need to look into. Because if they can go back three years and find the town or find her, or both, I think that's what we look into. The other, um, one that jumped out at me was, where is it? They only be driven by a town official or employee with a valid driving license. One of the things that, one of the things that had come up when I first started looking at this, um, that was told to me was that on needless occasions, um, Tabitha would be used to chauffeur the town administrator to out-of-town meetings. Drop her off, bring the vehicle back, park it up the street. Apparently to show that the vehicle's there, maybe she's there. Uh, and then when she's done her business, she would call her and go back and pick her up. I don't know if that's a violation of the ordinance. But if she's done nothing wrong and there's nothing to hide, why would she go to such lengths and have Tabitha drive her? If that is in fact what was happening? And is Tabitha allowed to drive a town vehicle? Is it spelled out clear enough in this ordinance?
Mr. Vowles says licensed employees. If Tabitha blew the license, I would assume that she would have the ability. And that still falls under the town administrator's purview, even with this updated one. So I would think that as long as Tabitha is licensed with the state or any state to have a good.
Which is fine, but again, we get back to, we get back to, why have her do that? Doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I think with the people that have been holding witch hunt, for lack of a better term, if she could wear an invisibility cloak, she would. At this point in time, this.
How is a, how are fags a witch hunt? That's where I get completely confused. When someone is held accountable for their own personal actions or professional actions in this case, how is that a witch hunt?
There's a difference between coming before the council and trying to come before her and allow her to face her accuser. There's a difference between doing that and then driving by her house and making known where her mother lives and what her other vehicle is. There's a difference between doing that. There's a difference between specifically asking questions that are on point, like you're doing right now with this ordinance, and coming on and full-out attacking her and going into history. I think, uh, that's where.
Don't apologize on that.
I'm not talking about you.
Okay.
That's why. Um, I think you've always been fairly respectful as much as you could. You're passionate, just like, you know, with the less here, maybe a little more so. But it has happened. And it's happened to her, and it's happened to me and other members of councils and previous councils before. And it does end up becoming like a witch hunt. Everything that you do is watched, so you feel paranoid. It's just human nature to feel that way. So I wouldn't blame her if she was having her administrative assistant do that. I honestly wouldn't blame her.
If she was having her administrative assistant drive her and drop her off.
Bring her to meetings and bring her back. And that way the vehicle's available for anybody else while she's not there.
I guess that's one way to look at it. So, and I think Ray beat the, uh, beat the fuel law to death. I don't think I need to, I agree with him on that. I think it's, uh, you know, she should just be department heads. And the plates, you know, the 4,000 plates should go. And, uh, I don't know why the town seal, by the way, is on her vehicle yet. That just kind of flutters me. It's on everybody else's. Every other town vehicle, what for some reason is not on hers. Didn't, Mr. President, didn't you order that at that one meeting?
The meeting that you're, but I defer to Councilman Soli. He asked the question, so. Can you, you had asked a question.
The question I had asked was, do all vehicles in the fleet have the town emblem in the administrative seat? Yes. So I was in the impression that all vehicles had included hers.
And she was specifically asked a question. That included hers as well.
And was there any?
She did not reply.
That would make sense. But, so, I don't, I don't, hold up, it was on that. Are we for a direct order?
Are we on that mic? Are we, did we move on yet?
Not yet.
I want you to answer that, Ray.
Okay. I'll report it, please.
Well, the bridge is all on, it's supposed to cost a buck.
Right, right.
So there's no pressure, they're black or white.
Absolutely.
I wanna answer the question that was posed about the cabinet back of the car. When you go into Providence, sometimes it's impossible to get a parking space, particularly here, the cabinet center for the governor's office. And so Tabitha drives her down, there's a short meeting. She just goes around some distant place and finds a parking space and then comes back when she's gone. Or if it's gonna be for the whole day, she'll come back and leave the car for somebody else to use. But it's not some great mystery or some great offense that you would do that. In fact, I drove down in my car one day and brought her. And we couldn't find a parking space, so I let her off. She did her thing, and then I came and picked her back. Picked her up when it was over. I mean, it's not like everything you see is some great mystery. So that's all that was.
So, Mr. Daniel, it's a Jonas Westy issue. Situation with the Royal Academy or the Johnnys School Business. To me, it has no function to the town. You know, like her, she sits on a board of directors of an entity, just like I do. And the fact is, what I do outside my business life, I do them outside my business life. But I'm not gonna have the town pay for it.
Well, I understand where you're coming from. What I'm saying is that this town had had a history of providing a vehicle that was taken out of state. And other towns around here have a history of providing much more expensive and fuel-in-efficient vehicles for doing the same thing. Lincoln is an example.
Well, if I had 12% of my budget paid by the 200 EVs, I could afford a little bit more.
Well, that's, that's irrelevant because it happens in other towns too. Johnston, North Province. The bottom line is, if you wanna change this, fine. But don't try to assume. But don't try to assume that an elected official is the same as a town employee. That ordinance did not apply. And other towns have virtually little or no references to using town vehicles. It's done as a matter of policy.
You're right, we'll correct the policy.
No problem. I'm going to move to continue this. I'm sorry.
Do you want to actually have any of those changes before you continue it? We talked about them. That way I can give the clerk a... If you want to post this for the next meeting, for the first reading, I want to know what changes you want to make.
The changes are, is that all these vehicles are going to have permanent decals.
Do you want us to include the 16-inch diameter and recommended?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Moving forward. Moving forward, yeah. If there's one... I don't know if Mr. Penegas has had one made yet, or to put on the town vehicle, is waiting direction of the council or not, but... It's like a pizza. Do you want to smell or what?
Again, I want to jump in here.
Go ahead.
I already had one made. The administrator directed me. We did a purchase requisition. It's already been purchased. It's 12 inches, conforms to every other town vehicle. So how we rewrite this in the future, 7, 16, 20 inches, I don't care, it's a billboard. I already have one earmarked for the administrator. This is the situation here. She's my boss. I work for the administrator. Until I get direction from the administrator, that's the position I'm in right now.
How long have you had this decal for?
I've had a couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks.
But, you know, I feel like the peanut butter, you had a little peanut butter sandwich yet? I think I'm going to get the counter off to the side here, and you guys can figure this out.
All right, thank you.
Do you want the, just the directives of the department to have, here the fuel log and recommended?
That's unreasonable. Do we need to take a photo on this, or just...
Well, I did consensus. I did want to make sure I give you another version. It's why you're...
Yeah, it's right down there.
So it'd be a town official or director, or department director, except this... The way this is worded now, police officers are exempt from the fuel log. And the chief, right now the way it's worded now, and the chief of the police can get community use to town, to town networks.
That's fine, that's fine.
So that takes care of the police department. Public Works, do you want...
We exclude the public works department.
Okay. Do you want to just exclude the public works department, is anybody else? Just for day-to-day use?
Well, you wouldn't want to exempt the DPW department, because ultimately then you'd be exempting the director too. So it'd be the day-to-day use.
Yeah, the day-to-day use of the vehicle.
Correct.
I'll come up with something on that, and I'll figure that out. And that's it, and then the other town vehicle.
EMA uses their cars or town cars?
Their own cars, they have their own cars.
Their own cars, because that's far away of...
Town plate?
Town plate?
Excuse me, municipal plate.
Oh, yes, one.
Right. And then that 400,000 goes...
No, I think it says, town vehicles have town plates on it.
It was as government plates.
Well, that can be...
Yeah, the municipal plate is a government plate, so it's the color plate.
It's a town government plate.
So I'll submit that with the clerk, and if anybody else has any changes to this next time, that would pretty much cover it.
Okay. So should we continue to... The next meeting, Mayor's? Yes.
Next meeting?
Next C and D are interrelated. Discussion by council, what are the directions on marking all town vehicles? We know that only other town vehicles have been marked according to, have been marked, which brings us to D, which is the town administrator's vehicle, which isn't. And under the town charter, it says that instead of all town vehicles, which is her vehicle, will have the town seal on it. So what's the plot is that she's not here tonight, but I'm going to move to direct her to put the, even though she's not here, I want to direct her to have it done by Mr. Penegas, who has the seals, to conform with the ordinance. Existing ordinance of this community. That's my motion.
Mr. President, I would agree with you, but the way the current ordinance is written, we can't direct the town administrator to put the seal on the vehicle.
But charter, we can direct the government, the town administrator. Is that correct? Mr. Lee Ozen.
Charter says the town administrator is supposed to follow an order passed by the council.
All right, so then we're then legal to demand this?
Asking her to enforce the existing ordinance, not the proposed ordinance, the existing.
So I move that we, I'd like to move to inform the town administrator, we're enforcing the existing ordinance, so we're directing to her to have the town seal put on her Ford Focus, because it is a town car. Second.
Discussion, Mr. President?
We have a motion on the second, how we're going to discuss.
Right. Motion by the chair, second by Councilman Sully. Discussion, Councilwoman Nato.
Has the seal been on all the town administrator's vehicles from here?
Mr. President, a question to make.
If there's a question, then anybody who knows the answer.
No.
No.
As far as I know, I have never seen a seal on it, mayor, manager, or town officials.
Okay. It's, I have no problem doing it moving forward. I just wanted it clarified, that it seems like all of these changes are being made because of her and who she is. And that goes back to my witch hunt comment before. So later on, when anyone watches the state, they can ask why I said that. This is why.
Well, the ordinance is clear. And the fact is that it hasn't been done, it hasn't been enforced, well, shame on those who came before us.
Yes, I was not telling you that I don't agree with that.
So therefore, that's why the motion, that's why the motion is debated and seconded. And the fact is that it is a town vehicle, it has to adhere to the policy of the community. And if she decided that she didn't want to do it, well, guess what? She can do it, but we have authority to order her to do so, and to direct her to do so. And that's what we're doing, that's under op, her view of the council. Is that correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Well, she's supposed to enforce the ordinance. That's what I would say, she enforces the ordinance of the council. Enforce the ordinance of the town.
So that's we're going to direct her to enforce the ordinance of the community. Any further discussion?
No question, the word is direct and not request. Have we requested this at all?
No, direct, we're directing.
No, I'm asking you. Did we request it first? Or are we just moving to direct without...
No, we're moving to direct, because I sent her emails in the past, asking to have it done.
Okay, so then you've requested, and now we're directing, okay.
Well, quite honestly, Councilman Sully, getting back to you, you asked that question that night, you asked, are all vehicles, are they marked? And the answer was yes.
Right.
And that's in the, that's in the chart, that's in it right now, so... I guess we're at the point where we want to take a vote if we direct or not. A vote call, Mr. President?
Madam clerk, vote please.
Ms. Sowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Now, Mr. President, on the directive by May, we may require, we should have thought of this before we voted, how much time are you going to, how much time is this council going to give the director of public works, who's a busy man, to get the vehicle in his possession and to have that decal put on by the administrator?
I guess we can also direct her to have it done within, since he has a decal already.
Right, yes. May I? Mr. Penegas, how long does it take to have one of your, or somebody apply that decal?
Seven to hours, being reasonable, to give you allocated time to have this done?
Not so much to Mr. Penegas, to get the vehicle to Mr. Penegas.
Yeah. I mean, once this is all vetted up, when the administrator gives me the car, it takes about an hour.
So with $48?
To put the seal on the vehicle, me getting the vehicle.
Okay, then I have to end the motion.
$48?
To direct the town administrator to turn the vehicle over to Mr. Penegas. I'll give her, it's in 72 hours to have this decal put on.
Okay.
Motion by the chair, second by Councilman Zelensky, to direct the town administrator to have the decal placed on the town vehicle, the Ford Focus with the 400,000 plates. Any further discussion?
Can I get further discussion? To make the vehicle available, that means, you know, maybe the administrator, maybe Hillskey's not here tonight, just to make sure that, you know, someone can go to the vehicle and put the sticker on, because I don't want to get up in a bunch of semantics. Make the vehicle available in 72 hours.
To make the vehicle available for the Department of Public Works to install. Because I would, I would put that in, just so it's not somebody else.
Yeah, I wouldn't trust anybody else.
I would assume the doors are going to need to be cleaned, at a proper temperature, and then the sticker will fix.
Yeah, see what we're called.
And that's why it takes about an hour, depending on the weather out there. We have to get the car warm to put it on.
So it's the same thing if somebody leaves this town.